We've been working harder than ever.
And you were still sending emails out, I was impressed. I was like, you're working.
Oh, no, we're...
Oh, no.
When something like this happens, we're 24/7.
They probably don't even know what Black Lives Matter stands for.
You're trying to stream it that way?
Yes, I do.
They've tried it different ways before, but the live stream, they have to have a feed like that.
All these cameras, I thought it'd be easy one day.
What?
Believe.
What?
Even walking this way.
I don't believe.
He said, "I don't believe."
Sure. I don't believe.
Time already. Are we ready? So, a call to order of the Planning Commission meeting for September 23rd, 2020. And we'll start with roll call.
McAlroy.
Um, if I can turn my mic on, I am here.
It's not on, I believe I had turned it on.
I might have bumped it the other way. Um, I'm getting a bunch of weird things here.
It's on.
Okay, I'm here.
Millie?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
Diaz?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Pearson? Aguilar?
Here.
Please stand and join me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good morning. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, members of public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to participate in today's public comment via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the board addressing the Planning Commission the same as if you were here in person. Uh, your name and address, give your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. This meeting can be viewed at Planning Commission's meeting, Tulare County main page website. Under state laws, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So, all interest parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing Planning Commission may be limited by the discretion of the chair as far as how long, you know, your time. Note, in order to be considered by Planning Commission, testimony to public items must be given at the time scheduled for a public hearing. As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn off or place, um, your cell phones, uh, either turn them off or put them in silent mode. Uh, in compliance with Americans Disabilities Act, if you need special assistance to participate in the meeting, please contact Resource Management Agency at 559-624-7000. So, anybody would like to address the Planning Commission on any item not appearing on our agenda? Seeing this and seeing none, I will close the public comment and move on to approval of the minutes for September 9th, 2020. Do I have someone who wants to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting, September 9th, 2020.
Do you have a second, please?
I'll second.
Give your name, remember?
Steve Pearson.
Steve Pearson made the second, Wayne Millies did the first.
Wayne Millies made the motion.
Okay, uh, roll call. No, we just push the button, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting, September 9th.
I can hear myself speaking in the background.
It's probably the stream.
I'm hearing voices, okay.
We're not.
We're moving on to item four. No comment, Maria. Parcel map public hearings, actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing. Unless anyone wishes to discuss any one of these items, requests will be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. To members of public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing, uh, via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here. If you choose not to call in, you may participate by submitting an email on this item when the item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the following subject. Agenda item number, um, it can be sent to the clerk of Planning Commission at, all lowercase, it's planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record, if received by the end of the meeting. That concludes the instructions for today's Planning Commission. So, I guess I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll go to each item and, uh, I'm looking for a motion from a fellow commissioner here to approve, um, A. For A. If you want to make a motion to approve that.
Are you going to close this?
Huh? I need to close the public hearing, okay, close the public hearing, okay. Looking for a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, this is Wayne Millies, to approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state's SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15315, Class 15, pertaining to minor land divisions in urbanized areas. Approve, excuse me, approve the exception pertaining to the waiver of a final map, parcel map, within an urban area boundary and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 17-045 and waiver of the final parcel map.
Second, please?
This is John Elliott, I'll second.
Mr. Pearson, we need your vote.
Carried, moving on to item B. Uh, someone like to make a motion? To approve or disapprove? Categorical exemption?
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15061B3 pertaining to the common sense rule and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 20021 with the final map waiver and one exception.
Second, please?
Maria McElroy, I second.
Vote? Motion carried, we'll move on to item C. Would like to make a motion? Categorical exemption, we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures with a waiver for final map.
Second, please?
This is John Elliott, I will second.
Roll call? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to move on to item 5A, but before we do, um, members of public, if you wish to participate in today's, um, public hearing via telephone, please call 559-624-7013. You'll be connected to the boardroom to address the Planning Commission the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out on live audio streaming and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may participate by submitting an email as the item is being heard. Emails should include sender's name, address for the record. Emails should include the following subject. Agenda item number, it can be sent to the clerk of Planning Commission at lowercase, planningcommission@co.tulare.ca.us. I'm going to repeat that one more time, you can send your comments to lowercase, planning commission, all one word, planning commission, at co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comments into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record. If received before the end of the meeting, that concludes the instructions for today's public hearing. So, it's, uh, 5A, it's a special use permit PSP 20-011 Kings River RV Resort. And it's mitigated negative declaration and special use permit to authorize the expansion of the recreational vehicle park. Park and two men, special use permit PSP 82-014 on 27.708 acres located in AE20 exclusive agricultural area and a primary floodplain zones. So, our, April Hill is our staff person, will tell us all about this. Thank you, April.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch and commissioners. Kings River Resort LLC, excuse me. Request a special use permit. They use its existence since 1971, when the Planning Commission approved special use permit PSP 71006 for recreational trailer park in an existing park and recreation area that had been authorized by a 1965 use permit. The applicants acquired the property in 2000, in May of 2019. 2019. It's located at the, uh, at, off of Road 28. Here is the hearing notification map. The notice of intent for mitigation, mitigated negative declaration was published on August the 12th and sent to the State Clearing House for 30-day review period of August the 14th to September the 14th. And this public hearing was noticed according to the law with a 10-day comment period. We did receive comments, or actually questions from neighbors, um, Mr. and Mrs. Swanson. And the applicant responded to them. They have no more concerns. Subject site is located on the north side of the Kings River between the south extension of Road 28 and the Kings River Bridge crossing of Avenue 400, about three miles east of Kingsburg and State Route 99. Site does not, uh, front a county road. RVs will travel along, uh, State Route 201, turn on publicly maintained 28 and then onto an easement around the east and north sides of an adjacent parcel that was recorded in a 1990 grant deed. Public works engineering had no recommended conditions of approval. However, the fire department requires adequate emergency access. Road 28 is a narrow road where the RVs will turn off State Route 201. Caltrans is currently designing a safety improvement project to widen shoulders along State Route 201, including the intersection of Road 28. The applicant estimates a total 109 daily trips, that's arrivals and departures, with 10 by employees, 95 by customers and four deliveries. Current customer trips are about 45 per day. The property is in a FEMA flood zone AE and in a federally identified special hazards area. Most of the site is in a FEMA regulatory floodway of the Kings River. And a portion of the site is in the Kings River Designated Floodway of the Central Valley Protection Board. That most of the development is in the AE, AE20 zone. The engineering firm, QK, formerly Quadnoff, has designed septic systems for the RV park to comply with the regulations of the County Environmental Health Services Division and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. It originally had four systems and they've been reconfigured to probably about 10 so that it stays, um, under 3,500 gallons per day. That's 10 individual septic systems for the camp, for the RV park. It will comply with the county's local agency management program. The expansion will be on land that is already developed. However, mitigation measures for hydrology include conferring with the US Army Corps of Engineers to determine whether a Clean Water Act 404 permit is needed. And they will also be conferring with the Regional Water Quality Board to determine if a Section 4001 water quality certification and a state general permit order 2009-009 for storm water discharges associated with construction and land disturbance activities are needed. The staging areas will be a minimum of 50 feet from the edges of the river to reduce the potential for disturbances of or non-storm water from the edges, uh, discharge to the Kings River. Best management practices, including silt fencing and fiber rolls, shall be implemented to minimize the dust, dirt and debris resulting from the construction activities and to protect the water quality of the Kings River. Following completion of construction activities, appropriate erosion control measures that meet the requirements of the water board and project permits shall be implemented to ensure that soils disturbed by construction are stabilized to minimize non-storm water discharges into the river. All disturbance to aquatic habitat, including riparian vegetation and jurisdictional waters, shall be minimized with the use of environmentally sensitive area fencing. And all soil exposed shall be regurgitated using native plant hydro seeding or high life planting. Those are some of the mitigation measures going forward this project. The site is located within the boundaries of the Kings River Plan, which is adopted in 1982. The land use designation is public or private recreation with resource conservation in the floodway. The project is relative, is consistent with relevant goals of the Kings River Plan, including a goal about rural residential recreation opportunity area, circulation, water and sewer facilities, flooding, recreation, motorboating, Kings River riparian habitat, vector abatement and archaeology. The subject site is outside any urban boundaries and is consistent with relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan. No impact, traffic impact studies required and the property owner shall sign a right to farm notice. The aerial photo shows the subject site with 85 RV and tent spaces currently. There are three camping cabins on wheels, three buildings with bathrooms and showers, a laundry, a laundry room, boat launch, dock part, laundry and, uh, and store. There's also some parking, uh, storage spaces for about 86 RVs or boats. As noted, the Kings River is located on the southern edge of the site. I'll be showing some site photos from their website a little bit later on. Surrounding properties contain agriculture and scattered rural residences. The nearest off-site residence is about 600 feet northeast of the RV park. Site plan is pretty detailed and, uh, the proposed improvements include 94 new RV spaces on the same footprint as the existing camps ground spaces. So, it would be a total of 189 RV spaces. There'll be seven new cabins on wheels for a total 10, upgraded septic systems, utilities and services, a swimming pool and spa, and remodeling the store. And also have a new restroom and laundry buildings. The environmental assessment officer has approved mitigated negative declaration for public view aboard the project, indicating that the proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment with mitigation measures. Keep you there. There's the photos of the site. Comments were received from Caltrans. Mitigation measures are included for cultural, hydrological, hydrological and tribal cultural resources. Waterways and their surrounding areas are considered to be highly sensitive for, um, cultural resources as indigenous people utilize these areas as permanent villages, temporary camps and tax, task specific sites. Staff requested a cultural resources, records research and a sacred land search. Both were negative for the site. However, there's one recorded resource within half an hour, half a mile. In compliance with AB 52, requirements for mitigated negative declarations. Staff emailed and mailed a consultation to local tribes on June 9th. One response was received on July 14th, 2020 from the Tachi Yoka tribe. Mitigation measures are included for inadvertent discovery of archaeological, historical or cultural resources or for the discovery of human remains. This ends staff's, um, report. If you have questions for me or for the applicants, they are in the audience.
Before we go on any further, I'd just like to announce to my fellow commissioners, we have someone who's listening, who has hearing, uh, difficulties. And so, speak loudly and clearly into your microphones. So, will, um, do you have any questions for her, uh, April, not her, April Hill? Couple, or do you want to save them for the end?
I, either way, it's about location of a few items.
Yeah. So, why don't we open the public comment and see what the public has to say and then we'll go to that, is that okay, Maria? Okay. So, I'll open the public comment at this time. Anyone from the public like to come forward to speak for this project, including the owner? Anyone who wants to speak against this project? Now is your chance, okay? Seeing that there's neither, uh, I will close the public comment and take it to my fellow. Oh, that's right, we also, just in case someone has called in, we will give it 60 seconds before I close the public comment.
Maria's question may involve the public too, or no?
Uh, I don't know, maybe April knows everything, but it could end under further questions.
Well, we can always open it back up, so.
The agents are, have been listening remotely and may want to chime in.
Okay, so.
The engineering firm and the people who designed it.
We're weighted with bated breath, I don't know what that means, but anyway. Through the chair, I believe there's somebody in the audience. Okay, you have to come up and speak in the microphone to address, uh, the commission, so. Give your name and address for the record.
Kings River RV Resort LLC, I'm the applicant. I'm just available if there's any questions that staff might need some assistance with.
Maria? Want to ask the applicant?
I have a very complete, uh, description.
I didn't see anybody who's going to testify, so, go ahead.
Couple questions about locations, because I'm not sure I saw that or I skipped over it. Um, is, where is the pool supposed to be built?
The pool would be in the very north end of the property. It's, would be right across from the existing, uh, office and store.
Can you, okay, so at that top area?
And portion of that exhibit A.
Okay, and that's not on water?
No, it's not on water, and so, you know, we had a, uh, two-foot flooding event last year, as you're, probably most of you are aware. And that area does, does not be affected when, um, high waters, what we like to really call it, residential flood. When high water happens, that area does not get any of the high water and it's the driest part of the property.
The reason for that question, and you'll see that there's kind of a theme to the questions that I'm going to ask, but the reason for, and several questions, but the reason for that particular one is when you drain a pool, where the water's going to go, all that chlorine water? So, um, that would be my question on that.
We will never drain that pool. I, you know, being in the property management business, uh, you don't drain pools. That's when they lift up a load out of the soil and, uh, you just don't drain pools. That's how they crack and get destroyed. So, it's just not in the business practice of a pool operator to ever drain it.
Okay. Um, the other question I have, well, another question, I have three total unless something else comes up, but, um, the tribal monitoring program for when ground's disturbed, is that a little bit different than what Chris was recommending? The, um, cultural resource info center? What are you going to do for, um, it sounds to me like the, the reason I'm asking that question is because it sounded to me like the monitoring program is a little bit different than the higher measures that Chris, that Chris Center wanted.
RV park development is about the least invasive type of development, uh, out there. Uh, when we add these recreational vehicle spaces, all we're really adding is water, electrical and sewer connection. And for that development, all we're doing is digging a one-foot wide by two-foot typically trench. And the utilities lay down and then there's filled out. So, it's not a very large earth movement type of development. The only area that will have really some earth movement is the pool area. Digging for the pool area. I'm not really sure how, maybe April can better answer that question, that's not really in my expertise.
Through the chair, um, yeah, the, the Chris and the, um, sacred lands file search, uh, didn't find anything, but one tribe, uh, the Santa Rosaria Rancheria Tachi Yoka Tribe did respond and they said they would have some concerns. So, I mean, whereas we would not have necessarily added, uh, measures here to do anything if it comes back, comes back negative. For the most part, we do anymore. But, uh, if it comes back negative in this case, we did add those mitigation measures.
Okay, so there's an observer that's going to be on site, which is what Chris wanted? Or is that, is it just if somebody maybe finds something, then we may do something?
That will require the applicant prior to the start of any construction related activities to coordinate with the tribe for onsite monitoring during earthmoving activities.
By me, um, when I was reading it. So, the final question that I have for now is location of the upgraded sewer facilities or sewage storage? Um, because that's a really sensitive area right there. Um, so that, that's the question I had and how, you know, what the elevation is around that area.
April, do you have a site plan for that?
Maybe we save that for the staff, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. We can save it for April.
Yeah, that's a better question for, for them. Uh, we, we know it's been all engineered and, um, and it's, it's a big upgrade to the site, but, um.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a question just for your information. That's a question that I ask for any project that's built near a waterway, is the sewage facilities, because that's, that's a really important issue.
Quadnoff listening, so maybe they can dial in, okay?
We have to confer with Army Corps of Engineers, but there is no type of construction or sediment or anything that's going into the Kings River. Again, it's mostly trench, put our utilities in, backfill and all done probably, you know, within a few days of the actual trench being opened up.
Water in that area right now, because it seems pretty dry out there.
No, the, the Kings River, as many probably know, is only voatable about six to seven weeks a year and that's when we get very busy. Right now, it's just more of a meandering stream, ankle to tie in a couple of pools, but, uh, it's, you can walk down, down it now. And that's the way it is most of the year.
Sir, what is the, uh, what's the current septic system that you've got in there now? How do you handle your current waste?
Uh, just where would the proposed new development would be? Uh, septic tanks and leach-
So you currently have septic, some septic tanks there, but you're going to?
Yes, I believe there's four systems right now.
Okay. Are the, are any of those in the F1 flood zone?
Have QK answer that, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's important. Yeah, now we're going to put 10 total.
Addition.
10, it's going to be 10 addition or 10 total?
Yeah.
Anyway.
I know all the lower line areas, we have lift pumps that take it to a higher area for leaching, so, but I'm not 100% sure. Would like staff or QK to answer that.
I kind of went through this as best I could, but it's 480 pages or 400, so, and it's not, and when you scan through it, it's harder than just having it in paper where you can just open it up and get to it. So I went through it, I spent a couple of hours trying to figure it out, but I could not figure out where the septic system was leaching to and.
Oh, the leach lines, I know where they are. They're, they're adjacent to the bathroom buildings and yes, they are definitely on the highest ground in the RV park.
So the tanks are down in, got to be obviously below, below grade for the waste to get into them in the first place. So then we're pumping them out of these tanks up to the leach line?
Correct.
Okay, now that's a little bit better.
Yeah.
So when water through, flows through those or over those tanks that are underground, are we leaching anything out of there or pulling anything out of that? I'm not an engineer and I don't know.
Maybe we get Quadnoff to answer that, okay? Since they designed it. Okay, but we won't, I'll remember that.
Still got a couple of more questions. These little cabins on wheels, they're registered, they're, they're not mobile homes, they're RVs, right? Because they're.
Yeah, they're park models, which even though they look like a mini mobile home, they're considered an RV because they're less than 400.
495 square feet and if you're under 500 square feet, then you're handled by the DMV.
Actually 400 square feet, they're less than 400 square.
Okay. These are not going to be permanent, are they? They're going to, wheels are going to stay on them?
We inherited those three park models. It's not our plan to add any park models to this property. We're more interested in the transient resort RV business where people come on vacation, they take their own recreational vehicle there and boats, jet skis, enjoy themselves for a couple of days to a few weeks every summer and then go. That, that's our business plan. It's not permanent park models. But that, that being said, those are on pads and piers, park models and sit about, the floor actually sits about three feet above the ground. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, well, we're getting there. Are those, are those in the way of the flood? Are they jeopardy during flood?
They were not moved during our last high water event in June of 19. Again, because they sit three feet off and I don't know, maybe the high water was a foot, foot, not a foot, I would say. All the recreational, you know, that's the, you see a lot of recreational vehicle resorts built in hundred-year floodplains because they have wheels. And so when a high water event happens, they can relocate quickly and that's, that's what our, our clients did, customers did.
So these that you've inherited, it can be moved? Is that what you're?
Can be moved.
Okay.
Yes. They elected not to, the owners of those.
Right.
And they didn't really need to in the end either, because it only, it was about a foot of high water.
Okay, all right. So, but you have a means, you have a vehicle, if it has to, if you get word from the Army Corps that they're going to do a flood event release, that you can get those out of there within 24 hours, I'm assuming that's.
Very easily. You can probably have them torn down and moved within an hour if you had to.
Okay.
Okay. Maria, do we have anybody call in?
I don't have any, I actually have the agent on the line if you need to speak to them, but I have no.
Ask you to speak up?
Emails.
We have questions for Q, the agent.
Do you have questions for the agent? Okay, let me have them call in.
Moment of silence. So how long has this RV park been here?
I think it's been there since about the 50s. We've only owned it since May of 19, so a little over a year. I think at one time, it was primarily a mobile home park and then at some time, it was changed to 100% recreational vehicles.
That's better.
Yes, mobile home park would not be a good use because there's definitely not movable in short notice.
So how many of these 400 square foot, whatever you call them, do you have?
Park models.
Park, how many?
Three at the property.
Okay.
But they're, they're very movable also. That's, they're considered recreational vehicles. They have wheels. They just look a little bit more permanent because they typically have the siding attached to them and looking more like a, a mobile home.
It appears to me that RV parks are, they're full most of the time. The demand is huge. So it gets people to stop in Tulare County.
We manage five RV parks and this summer season, we were quite nervous, you know, the pandemic first started, of what was happening to our operations. And the recreational vehicle business and camping had the most spectacular summer ever. The demand for people to be outside to enjoy themselves and get, get outside of the house during the pandemic was exceptional.
Okay, I believe we do have the engineer on the line now. Good morning. Hello?
Good morning, yes. Yes, this is Brian Shoner with.
Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the planning commission meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Brian Shoner. I'm with QK, Quadnoff Engineering, under the Clovis office at 601 Pulaski, Suite 301 in Clovis.
Hey, thank you. This is Bill Whitlatch. I'm the chair and so my fellow commissioners have some questions. So go ahead, Maria.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
Okay. Brian, Ed Diaz here. Just, this is just a technical question. I understand that these 10 septic tanks that are going to go in, into the engineered septic system are going to be in the F1 flood zone and will have water overflow at time during flood events. Just, just so that I'm feeling better, when you have water flowing over these tanks, these septic tanks that are full, is there any means of waste leaching out of that into the water flow, water stream as it passes over?
Well, the, the California Plumbing Code addresses this issue with putting these types of system in, in a floodplain and also there's some FEMA regulations. And so the septic tanks themselves have to have a sealed cover. And any penetrations into the septic tank have to be sealed in a, with an expansive sealant to make sure water can't come in. The, the systems themselves, where the septic is going to sit, are sealed. So if, if it does get covered with water, there's no way anything can get out of that system into the water. And the similar thing with the leach fields, the leach fields are obviously going to be buried a foot or more below grade with water from those fields discharging down. So again, there, there shouldn't be any possibility of those systems leaking water, even if they are flooded. There are certain precautions that are going to have to be taken if there is flood. Obviously, you don't want, you know, toilets being flushed, floods underwater, those sorts of things. And once the floodwaters recede, the system's going to need to be inspected and pumped out to make sure there was no damage and those kinds of things. But everything will be constructed per the plumbing code, which should assure that if it is covered with water, there will be no leakage of septic into the waterways.
Thank you. You answered my question. Maria?
Yeah. So how many of these septic tanks or permanent structures are going to be within the, not just the F1 zone, but the current, let's say, what is it, 50 feet or 100 foot boundary of the, of the current waterway?
Septic systems themselves are going to be, a majority of them are going to be kind of in the middle of the, the site, which is kind of the highest point. And I think, because that's where the existing ones are now, a couple of them, and we'll be expanding that area. So they are at higher points. That's why we have, we're going to be, there is some now, we're going to be putting additional sewer lift stations in order to pump up to the septic tank areas. So they're all well, I mean, they're in the middle of the property. They're the furthest point away from where water could possibly be.
Okay, so just to clarify, because I heard the word majority, I just need to clarify that in my mind. So if the majority are going to be at the high point or in the center, how many of them are going to be within 100 feet of the current river's boundary? And that's question.
Within 100 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's question one. And the second part, so I split up the first two-part question, is how many permanent structures are within that boundary?
The, the septic tanks and the leach fields themselves, none of them are within that setback. All, the ones I heard talking about the pool, there's going to be one to service the pool and that area. Again, that's going to be towards the center of the property. There's one that services the existing office building. Again, that's towards the center of the property. And the other eight of them are going to be right in the middle where the existing tanks are. We're just expanding that area. So none of them are within that, that 50 to 100 foot range and they're also within the, I think it's the 50 foot or 100 foot setback of the existing water supply well for the facility.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. You might want to just stay on for a few minutes in case something comes up, okay? Thank you very much.
I'd just like to add during high water events, because we don't really call it a flood, because there's not houses and cows going down the river. It's just a little bathtub rise of about one feet. Yes, it's high enough where we have to get our RVs out of there, but during these high water events, there's no toilets being flushed because everybody's gone.
Okay.
There's no sewer use during these high water events.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. You can sit down, so if you need to come back or rethought, I'll give you the chance, okay? So is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time and for or against the project? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and go to staff's recommendation.
Just for the record and through the chair, we had the applicant. I knew there would be concerns about septic on this project, so we did make them go to the next level and do this full study upfront instead of waiting for the lamp engineering studies later. So that's why in your package on page 104, they went through this, this effort. And if you look at it, it's a pretty good, good effort. So we had an indication of any of the potential impacts from septic to the waterway itself or to the groundwater and making sure that there were, were not any, so.
Even though I've closed the public comment, I just want to make sure that no one else has called in.
No, we have no phone calls and no emails.
Okay. Or text messages. Okay, go ahead, April.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Staff proposes that, two motions, that your commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the special use permit.
Okay.
Just one, one question here.
I was going to say, if anybody wants to add a comment, go ahead.
I just have a comment here. Part of the description was that we were to amend the previous use permit. What was the amendment? I missed what was meant, being amended.
Well, the use permit itself is going to allow these, the conversion of the camp sites to RV spaces and we're allowing the, the boogie boats that they wouldn't necessarily have to go through the use permit process again in the future. They'll always have to go through the river permitting process, which is now held in RMA, but they wouldn't have to. Every time that boogie boats or whatever it's called, they, they need a use permit. We're part of that process and we don't necessarily need to be because we're talking about use of the waterway, which we have no jurisdiction over from the land use perspective. So that, those are the only two amend, amendments to this use permit itself.
Okay, so you're basically just piggybacking off the old permit?
Yeah.
Instead of starting over again?
And, right, and in some instances, we might do a minor modification, but we thought this was big enough and that the planning commission had previously gone through the ropes enough that we should bring it back before you. But yes, in most instances, this, this could be a minor modification.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
So staff has recommended we adopt a mitigated negative declaration. Someone like to make that motion, please? Do I have a motion?
This is John Elliott. I'll make that motion that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration consistent with California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines.
Can I have a second, please?
You have to move first, John. There you go.
Didn't John just make a motion?
Yeah, I hit the button.
Nothing's happening. Oh, I, the problem is it's me.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And who said that?
Gil.
Okay. Motion carried. Someone like to make the next motion, please? Someone want?
I'll make that motion to approve a special use permit number PSP 20-011 for an expansion of a recreational vehicle park and an amendment to special use permit number PSP 82-014, subject to findings and conditions.
That was Gil Aguilar. Could I have a second, please?
This is John Elliott and I'll second.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah.
I'll go.
Need a break?
I've lost the connection to the presentations.
You lost the connection to? Okay.
Okay.
It's dead, it's been dead. It's always my system.
Doesn't like you.
Does not like you.
Keep your hands off. Problem.
No, not.
Oh, you lost the connection to them.
Yeah. That's what I said, I lost the connection.
Okay, this is a job for IT. Let me call IT.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
For technical.
That's it.
We call, should we call Dell computer?
Dell?
He lost.
Don't call Dell. Gee, I got a whole, I had to.
Lost connection to the.
I spent 30 minutes this morning again.
Somebody else has it, it's just he doesn't have it.
Seems like this one always does it, though. This is the same one I've been on before.
We're reconvene the planning commission. We're going, going to go to item B. This is a special use permit, PSP 20-035. Victor Coronado, categorically exemption, a special use permit PSP 20-35 for ag establishment on 4.85 acres. We'll start with staff.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch, Commissioners. I'm David Alexander, a project planner too, in the county's project processing division. Before you this morning is a categorical exemption and conditional approval of special use permit number PSP. twenty-dash-zero-three-five to allow a agricultural service, uh, establishment on a four-point-eight-five acre parcel in the AE forty exclusive agriculture forty-acre minimum zone.
Use your finger on the screen, it's easier.
This is the vicinity map. Uh, the property is located, uh, north of five-six-two-three, Road Forty-two, Alpa, California, three-nine-three-two-zero-one, west side, and it is on the west side of Road Forty-two, APN number three-one-one-dash-one-three-zero-dash-zero-one-seven. These are the aerial and existing zoning maps. Uh, the parcel was legally created by subdivision map second home extension Colony, RM number seven-dash-three-two. The project review committee, um, application number PRC twenty-dash-zero-one-six was approved by the applicant, was approved for the applicant to submit the special use permit application on October, I'm sorry, April fourteenth, uh, twenty-twenty. The county environmental health services division, the county public works engineering division, the Tulare County Fire Department, and code enforcement, um, have responded to a consultation request. This is the site plan. Entitlement is found in section nine-point-seven-point-E. Because of considerations of smoke, fumes, dust, odor, and other hazards, regardless of the other provisions of this section, the establishment and operation of the following use shall be permitted in this zone, only if a use permit is first secured pursuant to the procedures referred to in paragraph B of part two of section sixteen of this ordinance. Agricultural service establishments, uh, primarily engage in performing agricultural animal husbandry services or horticultural services to farmer and services to farmers or farm-related activities in planting, harvesting, storage, hauling, and equipment repair and maintenance. The applicant wishes to use the site for an office and storage of grape harvest equipment during the off-season, and in the future, uh, may, uh, build a house to live on-site. Days and hours of operations, there are no set days or hours of operation, um, only as needed during the harvest season, uh, per the Board of Supervisors Resolution number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-seven-eight-zero. A condition of approval will restrict the activities to one-half hour before sunrise and one-half hour after sunset. Uh, for parking, um, there's no parking for the public, as the site will not be open to the public. Uh, proposed, there are two spaces for pickup trucks, one space for a two-ton truck, and ten spaces for trailers. Um, for employees, applicant states that there are two employees, uh, not including himself during harvest season. No signage is proposed. Um, the entire four-point-eight-five acre parcel, um, is requested to be used for the ag service establishment. Access and traffic, uh, the subject parcel has, uh, direct access to Road Forty-two for traffic there, um, is an estimated four trips during operating, um, days during grape harvest season. This site is not under a Williamson Act conservation contract. Public notice, for the project was a melitus surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with a ten-day public comment period before today's planning commission on, it was published, uh, starting on September ninth. No comments were received. This ends staff report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, David. Any questions for my fellow commissioners?
I have a question. Um, th- there are no houses nearby, right?
No.
Is there a reason why they're restricted to the half-hour and sunrise and sunset if they're-
That's, um, because they don't have, um, set times, the restriction is from a Board of Supervisors Resolution in two thousand and nine, that those type of activities be relegated, uh, half an hour before and half an hour, uh, before sunrise and half an hour after sunset.
To, to David's point here, they typically, that's the standard condition, uh, but we sometimes change that up if we get an operational statement from the applicant that does change that, but, uh, we hold them to it. Um, but in this case, they, they really didn't have a, a preference.
David, I, I am looking at the aerial, it, there is a, a structure to the south of it. Um, what, what is that structure?
I'm not sure what's, I believe that's just a, um, staging area for that orchard right there. There are scattered rural residential, uh, residences out there, but there's no subdivisions or anything close.
Okay. I looked through the packet, I didn't see any comments from, did you receive any comments that-
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Um, right until an office is built with a bathroom, um, for himself and the employees, there will be portage ons and a hand washing station.
I, I, I heard the term pumice being used, there not, are, there won't be storing pumice out there, were there?
Storing what?
The grape, grape pumice?
No, they're, they're storing, it's mainly tables. It's ta, it's, uh, tables and crates and, um, and the trailers.
But there won't be any, 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 uh, uh, fermenting type materials out there being stored?
The applicant, uh, did not state that one way or another, um, but that was brought up from the, uh, Health and Human Services for a hazardous, um, business plan, depending on, uh, what type of materials they may be storing there, and he had no response to that, um, not only after the application, but during the project review committee.
Is this thing being used already?
Uh, no.
This site?
No.
They're doing it the right way.
Yeah, finally, we get somebody that does it, follows the-
Follows the rules.
The PRC was, uh, was from him coming in asking for the special use permit application that wasn't due to violation.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll, uh, open up the public comment at this time. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this? Or is there anybody listening that would like to comment? We'll give you sixty seconds, starting now. Seeing that we have no comments, I will close the public comment and go to, uh, staff's recommendation. Or do we have any more questions? Lena, go ahead, David, tell us the staff recommendation is?
Uh, staff recommendation is to approve a categorical exemption and conditionally approve special use permit number two-zero-dash-zero-three-five.
So, do I have a motion on that?
This is Maria, my floor. I, I make a motion to approve the, um, categorical exemption consistent with the, um, that's the first one, I supposed to read the first one, huh? Um, to approve, um, the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code of Regulation, Section fifteen oh-six-one-B-three pertaining to the common sense rule and conditionally approve special use permit twenty-dash-zero-three-five.
Do I have a second, please?
This is John Elliott, I'll second.
Vote. Motion carried. We're gonna move on to the item C. Uh, this is special use permit PSP twenty-dash-zero-three-five, Sequoia Drive-In Business Master Plan Development Guide, PD, PPD two-zero-dash-zero-one, and Development two-zero-dash-zero-zero-two, and TSM number eight-thirty-four, Castlewood LLC, tentative, uh, vesting map subdivision, three lots totaling, uh, forty-six-point-one-seven acres, uh, hold on for a second. How do you make forty-six-point-one-six into forty-seven acres, ranging in point-two-five acres to, to, um, two-point-nine acres? So, we'll go to the staff report. Oh, into forty-seven parcels, reading error. Okay, go for it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Chuck Przybalski with the Planning Division for the Resource Management Agency.
Hey, even try this time to pronounce your last name, Chuck, but good to see you.
Ha- after twenty years, I'm just joking, but-
Oh, that's okay, slow learner.
Getting older.
Right.
I'm not a doctor like my son, so.
Thanks. Um, today before you is the, as we mentioned, the Sequoia Drive-In Business Park, uh, tentative subdivision map eight-thirty-four, planned development twenty-zero-zero-one, and development agreement twenty-zero-zero-two. The applicant, Castlewood, Inc., and engineers, Hartman Engineering. Just a quick overview, this is a besting tentative subdivision map, um, an updated development agreement, and a planned development. The applicant, Castlewood, it's located in east Visalia Urban Development Boundary, within the east, uh, within the Visalia Urban Area Boundary, but not in sphere of influence. It's approximately one mile east of the city of Visalia and about one mile west of the city of Farmersville, on the corner, southwest corner of Noble Avenue and Road one-fifty-six. This is a vicinity map. Uh, you can kind of see the location in between the two cities, just south of, uh, State Route one-ninety-eight. This is the aerial photo showing the surrounding properties. You have the Caltrans building just to the west, Rebel Lumber and Swap Meet kind of to the northwest, and a lot of other commercial businesses, um, to the north of the freeway and to the east of the, uh, of the project. Tulare County General Plan is commercial, and you can see the, in the blue, the east Visalia Urban Development Boundary. This area, the sphere, uh, I'm sorry, the urban area boundary is this red line for the city of Visalia to the west, and the project area is these four black boxes in the center here. Zoning is C-three commercial, um, with the SC overlay, which is a scenic corridor overlay, and the surrounding properties, you can see all the smattering of commercial development in this area to the north and east and west, and mostly ag to the south. A brief project description, I'll get into the details later, but this is a vesting subdivision map. It provos, proposes to divide approximately forty-six acres into forty-seven lots, ranging from a quarter acre to just over two acres. The planned development portion of it proposes to construct a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot, uh, building area for a commercial business park and adopt a master development guidelines to, um, and it also will update a development agreement that was, uh, approved back in nineteen-ninety-two. This project has been in the wind for a long time. Uh, as I said, it was first approved in ninety-two, and it's finally coming to the planning commission today, like twenty-five years later. Uh, one of the things I'd like to say is this is probably one of the largest commercial development parks in the county. Uh, we haven't had something like this for a long time, maybe the Mooney Grove, uh, I'm sorry, Mooney Boulevard Commercial Plan, which didn't develop as it was supposed to, and the master development guidelines, which will ensure that the project is constructed to the city of Visalia standards and, uh, the other standards that are listed in the guidelines themselves. So, this is kind of first for Tulare County, uh, for this type of, of, uh, commercial development. Just really quickly, um, Velma handed a-
No, I haven't, let me have it.
There are additional comments from the Fire Department. They're pretty standard. They will be incorporated into the resolution. Um, there's a handout with them, and, uh, anyways, they'll be incorporated into the resolution. I just said that. Continuing on, um, I'm bringing up the phasing right now to kind of show you how the phasing will apply to this particular project and show the different buildings as are being developed per phase. So, phase one will include a convenience market, gas pumps, fast food restaurants, and five other commercial buildings for approximately seventy-thousand square feet. It's located mainly to, on the east side of the project on Road, Road one-fifty-six. Phase two, fourteen, uh, commercial buildings at eighty-eight thousand square feet. Phase three will include ten buildings at a hundred-and-four thousand square feet and the development of the stormwater retention plan, and phase four will include thirteen buildings for ninety-eight thousand square feet and, and another ponding basin. You can actually see the phasing right here. Uh, phase one to the east, phase two in the south-central, phase three along Noble, and then phase four in the southwest corner. There's a series of maps right here that are, belong to the tentative map. Um, I'm just gonna briefly go over them so you can see them, they're in the package, but these will be adopted as the vesting tentative map portion of the project. This is the actual tentative map, uh, showing the acreages and how the properties will be divided. This is the setback map. The red lines show you how far back from the streets and, uh, everything that the buildings will, uh, the, will actually be set back. This map shows the building layout, uh, proposed. You can see the service station at the northeast corner, and along phase one directly south, those four or five buildings, uh, would be constructed first. The two ponding basins are on the west side of the project. There's one here, and there's one here. You can also see the, uh, there's the Tulare irrigation ditch that kind of runs through the middle. Kind of explain that in a little bit, but you can also see the circulation. There's gonna be several drives on one-fifty-six and one on Noble up to the northwest. Uh, this just shows the ro, road layout. Everything's gonna be designed to the city of Visalia standards. This is also city of Visalia standards for lighting, uh, garbage enclosures, et cetera. This is the, uh, sanitary sewer and drainage plan. Being a vesting map, everything has to be in today, uh, not approved later with engineering. So, once this is approved, they'll be locked into whatever we agree to today, or actually the Board of Supervisors later on. But this shows you their, uh, sewer and water drainage plan. Development agreement, it was first adopted in nineteen-ninety-three. There was several restrictions, uh, that were placed into the development agreement. One was for sewer, had to be one sewer system. There were some for water. There was, uh, also that the development had to be developed to city of Visalia, uh, improvement standards, and basically the development agreement ensured that these were in place prior to the development of this agreement. This new development agreement just basically updates the old one with the new numbers. It was sixty-four, but Caltrans came in, now it's forty-seven acres. Little things like that, but it's essentially the same development agreement that was proposed in nineteen-ninety-three. Um, furthermore, the, uh, master development guidelines ensure that the development agreement was adhered to and is carried forth in this updated agreement. Master development guidelines, uh, it serves as summary and framework to the development entitlement of this property, ensures all future development- entitlement of this property, ensures all future developments within the business park conform to these set of guidelines, ensures that the project complies with the Development Agreement, the, uh, old and new, and there will be a design review committee that will review projects prior to obtaining building permits from the Tulare, from Tulare County. So they're going to look at the design first and then approve it and then send it to us for approval, final approval. The committee interprets the guidelines, it's going to be made of the master developer, the project architect, and the project engineer at the beginning, and as I said, it's, uh, for guidelines for architectural theme, landscapes, signage, circulation, and other improvements. There'll also be a commercial owners association, um, which will be established during Phase one, the master developer will put in the infrastructure background during Phase one, but once this is completed, all maintenance and improvements to be constructed will fall to the, uh, commercial owners association to pay for, for financial. They're responsible for landscaping, irrigation, water, wastewater, roads, hardscape, and lighting. Some of the project benefits for this project, jobs, meeting greenhouse gas emissions, increasing tax revenue for the county, and it will also improve existing roadways and bicycle roads within the project itself. Some of the features, there's going to be an advanced water system, wastewater system, the effluent will be treated with ultraviolet light, you disinfect and they'll be able to reclaim the water and use it on landscaping. It'll be a low-impact stormwater design, and so there's going to be less pipes, it'll all, basically all drain to the stormwater ponds, it'll be pedestrian friendly with sidewalks and bike lanes, there's also a bus stop, and for circulation purposes, it's close to one ninety-eight, so any truck traffic can go right to the.
So you're saying they're going to build a sewage treatment plant on-site?
It will be actually a septic system, one.
It will be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but yes, it will have the sewer on-site.
What was your question? I didn't hear.
My question is, is that I, I, I know this project and why it's kept it from developing is that the planner, twenty-five years ago, committed them to connecting to a sewage, well, sewage treatment plant or something similar, so you were saying all parcels will be on septic tanks with the effluent going someplace that's treated and put on the landscape?
Uh, correct, the, it's supposed to be one system, and that'll be the, the system we're discussing, and the water will be clean enough to actually put on to landscaping. But yes, the Development Agreement restricted them to that, the original one, unless it's changed.
Well, this is kind of like a community sewer system by septic tanks that are all somehow connected, is that correct? As far as the, uh, the.
I'll have the engineer come up to actually explain more about this, I'm not exactly sure.
I mean, this is a great project, God knows Tulare County needs more of smaller-type buildings, and so, I mean, right now in the industrial park, you probably all know this, we have over two and a half million square feet of buildings being built and no small buildings, so this is a good idea, so I'll, I'll wait for that, okay? Thank you, Chuck.
Going into the environmental work completed by the Tulare County, there was an environmental impact report, it was made available for public review December twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, and ended on February fourth, twenty-nineteen. The final impact report concluded that the project will not result in significant or unavoidable impacts, and all impacts have been found to be less than significant or have been mitigated to be considered less than significant. The mitigation and monitoring plan is adopted as conditions of approval, so all the conditions in the environmental impact are conditions of approval. We received four letters from the Air District, Caltrans, Southern California Gas, and Table Mountain Rancheria, I did contact the city of Visalia last week, they had no comments, and.
Yep.
I do not believe they're in the audience today. So stormwater, just briefly, it'll be a low-impact design, design the slope to the retention, minimize large quantity of drain inlets and piping, and the ponds will be constructed in phases, and the maintenance of these ponds will be a part of the commercial owners association. Wastewater, in compliance with the Development Agreement, there'll be wastewater system, will be treated with an Orenco Advanced Tech Treatment System. It makes, essentially cleans the water to a secondary tertiary, uh, clean level, which is pretty high. The effluent will be treated with ultraviolet light, so it can be reused on landscaping, and it will go into a leaching system or be reused for landscaping. It'll, the sewer system will be maintained by the COA and will be constructed per the California Water Board On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems Permit. Water, currently, the project site has two agricultural wells located in the southernmost parcel near Road one fifty-six. It is estimated that each building will be about a hundred and seventy gallons per day, and the daily demand will be approximately seventy-five hundred gallons per day for the project. Now, considering if this project was actually going to develop residential, even at four units an acre, at three hundred gallons per day, at two hundred units, you're still looking at sixty thousand gallons per day, so even if you double this to fifteen thousand gallons a day, it's going to be a lot less water used on the site as opposed to a residential subdivision. So the northern well was tested for envi- water quality and it, and, and output, it was demonstrated to be about one point two million gallons per day, which would be sufficient for the proposed development. Circulation, traffic study was prepared by the four creeks, and as I mentioned earlier, the site will have five access points, one off Noble and the rest along Road one fifty-six. Some of the conditions of the project to meet, there will have to be a stop sign control or a traffic light installed at the Noble Avenue, um, one ninety-eight eastbound ramp. Furthermore, the project applicant will be responsible for paying its fair share for the eastbound ramp if it's ever constructed at sixty-two point eight percent. Now, that's contingent on if Lover's Lane or, uh, is constructed. If Lover's Lane's not constructed, then they will be, uh, on the hook for this. Tulare County Engineering just required three-quarter streets along one, Road one fifty-six. Biological, just really quickly, uh, there's, uh, habitats and species that were located nearby, with the incorporation of mitigation measures that are in the mitigation and monitoring program and conditions of approval, that these biological concerns would be reduced to less than significant impact. Briefly on cultural, we conducted, uh, cultural studies, there was one cultural resource within the project area, that's the irrigation canal, the proposed project will not disturb the canal and will maintain a thirty-two-foot buffer to the north and south.
Question, Chuck, is there going to be, is it going to be fenced off, is the canal going to be fenced off?
I believe so, um, the applicant answered that, but I, I do believe so. General Plan Consistency, it met with a hundred and thirty-one general plan policies, they're all listed in there. Before, uh, I recommend, a recommendation, uh, the applicant, the property owners, and Craig Hartman from Hartman Engineering are all available to speak, I believe Craig would also like to come up and discuss in, uh, the project before the Planning Commission. That concludes my presentation, and I'll get to the recommendations.
Thank you, and I have any questions from our, to ask our staff, or do we want to go to the, I'll go to the public hearing, we'll have the engineers come forward and the owner? So I guess I don't see any questions, so what I'll do is I'll open the public hearing, invite those who are for the project, come forward.
So this is that, uh, drive-in, the old drive-in?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about time, something.
If I may, real quickly, I did have two comments, um, that were phone-called into me last week, and their concerns were about groundwater.
Okay.
Pulling the groundwater out, thank you.
It was one mile from the Visalia bor- boundary to this project?
From the city limits. The urban boundary is probably, I'd have to guess, but I can bring up the map, um, probably a quarter, a half mile away, I would say, it would be at McAuliffe, and, uh, just east of McAuliffe.
But this is. One mile from the city limits?
But this is the farthest boundary that the city would go to, so it's the urban development boundary, right? Urban area boundary, at least Road one fifty-six, so I didn't know it went that far, but.
They don't really follow our rules, that they're tier, it's not, it's about a half mile from what they call their tier three, which is the furthest, uh, out that they will go.
So it's a little outside their area?
Correct, and just another tidbit, um, the east Visalia is actually an island UDB, it was meant for the county to develop, like Patterson Track and Goshen. Normally, we don't do the city of Visalia's urban standards in these islands, and we don't have to do the, um, MOU or memorandum of understanding with the city, but because of the Development Agreement, they have to do city standards.
Can you put the zoning map back up too, before you go? So I'm open to the, uh, the public comment at this time, so I'm inviting members of the public to come up and comment, so, uh, maybe the engineer can come up. Put your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Craig Hartman, uh, three oh eight West Oak, uh, Visalia, and I am the engineer, uh, worked on this since twenty fourteen, good morning Chairman and Commissioners. You bring up a good point, Chairman, about the sewer, it's been a, an issue that's economically held this project back for some time. Um, when we started the project in twenty fourteen, um, that was kind of the, you know, the new timeframe when the State Water Board was working on the lamps, the local, um, requirements that the county would have for sewer, uh, that wasn't adopted until twenty eighteen. A lot of this work was done prior to that, and we were kind of estimating where it would fall and try to create something, even if it didn't, it wasn't ever an agreement, it was pushed continually that we had something that would move forward, um, and what we're proposing here is kind of like one scenario, and because of the economy and the phasing of this, you know, what we would like to do is to ask that we follow the lamp now, since it's available, um, which will give us more options and scenarios, um, to, you know, work within the framework that's approved already, um, but, you know, to be able to phase this in different ways such that we're not really stuck with one plant where it's at, but we're stuck with the effluent, the setbacks, the other, you know, requirements that the state and the county have agreed to already. Um, I think that's the missing piece here, um, and I think that's, uh, you know, one thing we'd like to talk about today in the Development Agreement, um, and really, um, you know, making sure that we all, you know, understand that portion, but I think everything else, you know, we agree to, we believe that it would be a great project, uh, for the county, um, we, we like what, you know, the land use is proposed and, and the economy, and as you say, with, what's happening in Visalia, uh, we see that as well, and the timing is, is great for this, but any questions on that?
Let me how you handle all this, uh, the water that comes off your septic system? It's somehow combined into one system?
Yeah, so, um, there's kind of two ways to treat the wastewater, you can go septic, anaerobic, and then to a leach field, which is what the lamp allows, and then what we were proposing is to add an aeration piece after the septic tank, um, to therefore be, allow us to use that water for irrigation, um, and so, um, you know, we still probably want to do that eventually sometime, it's just getting the whole thing up off the ground in the first phase and having to do all of that when that's, you know, a higher standard than the lamp. And the city of Malibu has the secondary system, I mean, they don't have a, a, a public plant, they all have individual systems, a lot of the, uh, RV parks that are near waterways or, um, you know, mobile parks, uh, they'll do this system, um, and, and really the secondary system is what allows you to reuse the water, um, so it cleans it up more, it's another treatment level, um, it's secondary treatment, so, um, and the tertiary, uh, it's actually, the UV would be the tertiary disinfected portion, so.
Is this kind of like community sewer district that has to be formed, because everybody's dumping their water into the same?
Yes, that is, that is correct, so all the improvements will be, uh, owned and maintained, um, and governed essentially by the, uh, um, COA, um, in that way, you know, based on the state's regulations for drinking water, domestic water, whatever it may be, on populations and so forth, uh, everybody will kind of contribute to that, um, infrastructure and that'll be, you know, maintained properly.
And then, uh, each site has its own well, or are you talking about a community water system?
A community water system on the water side, yes.
So the mains and storage tanks and fire hydrants will all come off of one system?
Correct.
Where's the well site?
The well site, there's two of them right now, um, do you mind if I? So, lot thirty is, oh, it keeps on moving, sorry, there's a ghost. The lot thirty, um, is where we intend to put, uh, the water system, so it's going to be kind of like a similar Calwater well site here, um, you know, uh, depends on how many users are on the system, but as the, the users increase, so does the, uh, you know, the treatment level, um, and so, you know, full build-out, what does that look like? It's going to be some carbon filters, you know, probably two or three hundred thousand gallon tank, um, a bunch of pumps, some SCADA systems, things like that, and then on lot, uh, twenty-six, um, to the north is an existing cell tower, and so, uh, we designed this so that lot twenty-six would be where, you know, a, um, where we could put a, a centralized, um, septic system, um, and it would be, you know, out of the way, um, and maintained on its own lot.
Yeah, this is a great plan, this is, it's been a long time coming, but, uh, a great, great idea, a good timing too, so when you, if you get approval today, what's your timeline for breaking ground?
Uh, good question, I mean, soon hopefully, um, there's just a lot of, uh, things that we have to tie up, you know, on the economic side, and then, uh, find some anchor tenants, and then we'll be ready to roll, so.
County's open for business, we want you to start as soon as you can.
I, I'd love to put my, my new office out here, so, um, yeah.
It seems like during the pandemic though, the drive-in theaters are making a comeback. You could do that while you're building?
Good question, good question, yeah, we haven't thought about that yet, that opportunity, so.
Yeah.
He did say economic though.
We want to get people going back to the movies, and that's a safe way to do it, so.
I'm assuming the irrigation canal there is going to be all fenced off and, and protected, right?
Uh, you know, over time at the full build-out, yeah, but I don't, I don't think that we would, um, fence it, you know, day one, it would, we would require it as part of the conditions of, you know, each lot to, you know, put a fence back there.
Yeah, okay, I just, just need it so it's somewhat protected, we don't have people wandering around back in there, it is dangerous. The other thing is I'm seeing you've got, I believe it's, I heard thirty-two foot easement there for the district, they can get in there and maintain it and then abate the weeds and stuff like that.
Yeah, we contacted them some time ago, um, gave them a section, you know, for them to approve, um, and that, yeah, that's been done, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? If someone comes up and makes another comment, you want to come back, we'll let you come back, okay?
Not a problem.
Thank you, is there anyone else here who'd like to comment on this project? Hey, I, I know you, right?
Yeah, I know you do, you guys are the. How are you guys doing?
Don Fulbright, Castlewood Development, here on behalf of the developer and the owner on this project now. Craig mentioned the 2014, and now we're sitting in the 2020. We're not here to complain or anything, but that's a long time, and we have worked really well with the, the staff's done a great job trying to get us through COVID, you know, slows things down. The environmental impact report took a while to get through, and so some things have happened from our initial effort to put it on paper. So the big problem is what you mentioned, is they had to, the way the development agreement was formed in 1993 was they required, and there was some concern back then about groundwater being about 40 feet. I wasn't involved at the time, but I was in the room, and there was some concern about groundwater, so the development, the developing consultant signed on to this master sewer system to have to be developed for the whole thing. That's been like a handcuff. So we're, we're, throw us over the boat, we're going to sink to the bottom. And so we're looking, when we develop this, for another way to, to, first of all, we don't want to put a million-dollar plant in and take up all the room, so this is a runco system, advanced tech, it's pretty, it comes in compartments and you can add on to it. But now, and I like the way it's written up in the original summary and the way it's in the environmental agreement, but I don't think the actual developer agreement reflects the changes. So we've got some updating that needs to be taken place, but this lamp, the way I understand the lamp works, you can put a septic system on a one-acre piece of property. Now, we never looked at this with the idea of septic tanks down the road, but we were looking for, you know, like Caltrans, when they put their 10 acres in, they put a well in, and they put a septic tank, and that's what they're working with. Put the many storage next door, put a well in, a septic tank, and they're off and going. They're, they're, they were able to go in smaller segments. The requirement that's in the development agreement says the entire project has to be plugged into this sewer, sewer plant, and the language is the same it was in 1993. So this needs to be reflected, I think, the upgrade. The runco system allows us to do it in parts, we can add on. And also, but we'd like, we'd like the flexibility, and you've got to remember in the backdrop, we're putting a sewer pipe in all the streets, so that at some point down the line, we can, we can forget the septic system, and we're dealing with septic with a one treatment up, so we're treating the water, reuse the water. But at some point, we'd like to even get rid of that, and just if we could ever plug into the city, or some agency that's out there, that would be the ultimate. It might take 20 years. But we are putting that sewer line in the road for the eventual ability to tie into a system that comes, comes our way, if that, if, we're ways from the city, we're a mile or so, so, but...
Let me interrupt you, Don, I love the idea.
We're trying to do both. We're looking for flexibility.
What we have is reusing water.
Yes.
And making less demand because it's watering landscapes, so...
Yes.
And it's clean, relatively clean water. I wouldn't drink it, but it's, will grow trees.
Yeah, you could take it higher, further, but we're just trying to get it on the grass and the, and the, excellent idea, it's really, so we're pretty comfortable with that. That part of it works, but if we could, if we could go to the lamp, to the, not necessarily overdesign, we would be able to put maybe, on our Phase 1, we're going to put a, possibly a gas station on the corner. Well, our, our actual septic system is up in the south, so we, if we, if we're over one acre, why wouldn't we be able to use a septic tank to, to put that septic tank with the treatment, they have a commercial treatment version of it, that would allow us to function there without tying into the lot that's behind the tower, you see what I'm saying? We've been, we've been, we've been actually handcuffed to something we can't do, and it's like it's been 25 years. So we're looking for some flexibility, and being that the lamp, in 2018, we submitted this in 2016, go through all the process, it's been a couple of years just getting the EIR, I think, I think that modification could be reflected in the development agreement, do us a lot of good.
So have we offered you that flexibility yet?
It's a...
Or staff, but, okay.
I think, I think they, everybody knows that we're trying to get something that's more flexible, and in fact, that this lamp is just, it's pretty relatively recent. All this was submitted in 2016, so...
I think it's great.
So if you could help us with that flexibility, that'd be good. We, I, I think the water, because you got the fire protection, there's no way to really do it with individuals, so we're good with that part. But the language in, in the development agreement is eerily similar to what it was in 1993, and it spooks me a little bit. And the write-up on the, on the summary of the, of the project and the way the, the analysis of what we're doing, that's all good, but it's not reflected in the development agreement. We need to, we need to maybe work with that and, and, and put the flexibility that we've got and what we've tried to put together. You know, when you look at this map and you're trying to figure out what we're going to do, we know, we feel really comfortable with the south, you know, small users, but the north, which is sitting on the freeway, we may get pushed around a little bit with a bigger user. And we have to be able to, you know, we might have to take two or three lots and make one user out of it. So we're, we're really comfortable with the south, works really good. The north, because it's on the freeway, we've had different people approach us, but we don't have the water or the, or the ability to handle the wastewater in such a way without putting the whole thing in. So help us with that, and the staff, I think...
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, all right.
So Aaron, can you comment on the, any flexibility?
Well, like Don just said, we are trying to work with him on this, so then I, I think all we have to do is tighten up the, the language, and I'll call Chuck up here in a second to see, see how we do that, but, yeah, we can do that after we've gotten through all the other public comments.
The summary of the project is really good, and, and just, it's just, it's just talk about 453 pages, so look at some, the, 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 the actual EIR is 1,000 pages. So there's quite a bit of work that's been done with this, and I don't want to, I just, if we could just take that one little portion and get the development agreement to reflect the lamp and this, this, the dinosaur flexibility, and we can get this done.
I think we can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and comment on this project at this time?
If not...
Uh-oh, here we come.
Hello there. My name is Mark Crisp, and I'm, live at 1275 Viva Way, Arroyo Grande.
Look a lot like your dad, did everybody tell you that?
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
Framing trees, or not?
Long time.
Nice to see you.
Tough business, you know? Glad to be out of that one. But I did one last week, I never give up. I think, I think kind of what we're trying to get at in speaking to this matter is that with the new lamp and the new septic system that they have, this is not just a septic system, this is a treatment system, that it will fit on maybe three lots, it would service three lots or five lots, got a lot to do with flexibility on the, what user you're going to get. If you get a user that takes five acres, you know, he can easily put in his own septic system and, and, and treat, treat what his effluent would be, and that water that comes out of this new system on every one of them that you would put in, instead of having one centralized one that would be off all the way over underneath the ditch and create a lot of problems to get to, you could put it by where they're working, and that water comes out clean. It's like 99% clean, and I wouldn't drink it either, but it's plenty good for irrigating, and that's really what the, the, the crux of this project's been, is trying to go build some, you know, million-dollar sewer treatment plant off on the other side of the ditch, way in the back, to service maybe a farm supply guy who's got a, got a bathroom in it. You know, you don't, you don't really know what you're going to get. You know, the gas station would be a pretty high-end user, in our opinion. And with that scenario, they're going to have to build the system to accommodate whatever they do, and that water will come out, you know, good water, and, and it will be used for irrigating, and will save the water that way, and, and so I think that's really what I wanted to, to be clear about.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else who likes to come forward? If not, I'll give 60 seconds from those who are listening to call in, starting now. Seeing that we have no one calling in, and we have no further comments, I will close the public comment, and we'll go to...
Oh, emails as well. We have no emails as well.
Email, okay, thank you. We'll go to the staff recommendation, Chuck. Slow to give you more time, you know?
Through, through the chair, after conferring with Chuck, I think we can make some simple changes to the development agreement, and mostly it's not the agreement itself, but the attachment, Exhibit C, the restrictions, we can change the requirements for the community septic to incorporate the lamp's requirements and incorporate the system they're proposing. And we can do that between here and the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Without, without any problem.
I'm a little bit unclear on what was being proposed. Was it temporary till they all get built out, or is it permanent for those?
Well, I think they're requesting some great flexibility here throughout the whole process, but as Don stated, they'd have the pipes in the road to do a community septic system. And as Craig pointed out, the concerns back in the day about the contractor just plunking a septic tank down are now pretty much gone because of lamp. I mean, these are all engineered systems anymore, so that's not, lamp does clean up a lot of the concerns, but same time, at some level, there has to be probably a process where they do not use, because we're talking to this developer now, but they might not always be the same developer. So we just want to not build so much flexibility that we're plunking down septic tanks on every one of these lots, so if they can, you know, use the technology they're talking about to do four or five at a time, that'd be the best way. We could limit it by phases, but again, I, the concern about the leaching is pretty much removed from the process anymore, so I leave that a little bit up to you, if we want to limit it to, you know, get them off the ground with the first phase, but I, again, I don't really want to restrict them, because you don't know who's going to come in and build out which phase.
But the new tanks are all sealed, so it's just the, the water that comes off dealing with that, so I think we...
Well, we...
You got to give us the wording, because I don't know how to...
Well, they're going to, as far as the tentative map's going to have the requirement that they put the basic lines in the ground right now for the sewer. And the overall goal would be to produce, in their master infrastructure plans, produce a community septic system. So in the interim, the development agreement could give them the ability to, to work towards that community system, but allow them to use our lamp process and the technology they're suggesting to connect as many units as possible. And it's not hard language, and it's not restrictive, but it gives them the flexibility, because again, a project like this of this magnitude, unless someone comes in and buys all these lots, it gives, that's the only way they'd have enough money to probably build this community system right off the bat, so I, I don't, I wouldn't want to restrict them any more than we have to right now, given that the concerns aren't what they used to be.
It makes a lot of sense to me, but I'm the only general engineering contractor that's sitting here, so I want to ask my fellow commissioners, do you have any questions? I've done a couple of these systems, and they're, they're great, because no longer are we putting the effluent, the water that drains off, back into the ground, and water there is very available, it's more shallow than any other place in the county. One year, we had a flood year, and I had people calling me when I was the irrigation business, wanting us to do drain tiles because the water's getting too close to the root structures of walnuts, and I don't think we have the ground, you know, the water so close anymore, so... Anyway, having said that, we, do any of you have questions?
Is this a forked approval or tiered approval, where if certain conditions are met, then certain systems are put in, or is it one approval for whatever they want to do within certain parameters?
I think what we are suggesting, and leaving a little bit up into your discretion, is that staff would recommend that we do give them this ultimate flexibility, so we are approving it for all times with the goal or the intent to actually do a community septic system, but not necessarily requiring it. But there is the opportunity to make it, as you said, a forked or tiered, where you could do it by, by phases. And that would be kind of consistent and typical of a, a development project of this magnitude, that maybe we allow them to do that whole first phase using the lamp process versus, and by the second phase that they have to start building the, the community septic system. What that would force is in the future, if they want to change that, that they'd have to come back through with an amended development agreement. The advantage of that is it would be one stop at the Board of Supervisors, wouldn't have to go through the planning commissioner, go through another process. It's a pretty easy change if the engineering requirements are being met. And it'd be, it'd be fine to do it that way, but that wouldn't necessarily be staff's recommend, recommendation.
So can you word your recommendation so I can understand it?
Allow the standard county policy of lamp be applied to the first phase of this project, and not require a community septic system until Phase 2 of the project?
Essentially, first phase would be the temporary, and then they'll do the community system after that.
And are they okay with that?
No, we, we need to ask them.
Don?
We could also make it to the northern area, but if we do it by phase...
Mike, Don, please come up.
There's four phases, so to me, the first phase, I don't know how they make enough money to build this big giant system.
2016, then...
This is Don Fulbright speaking.
Don Fulbright, I'm sorry. Castlewood Development.
You're being recorded. Fairing.
I like to keep, I like the idea of Phase 1 being tied to the lamp, I'm not sure why we're not doing the whole project tied to the lamp. You know, the, the lamp restriction is one acre parcel, basically, before you can, we're not doing a septic tank, we're doing a septic tank plus one level mitigation, so I'm open to, the septic tank and the sewer, the, the ability to have to put a whole system in is what's been the problem with getting anything done. So if, we picked Phase 1 to be along 156, because we didn't have so much street frontage, and we could target our, our target roads in, and then go to Phase 2 and take it a little bit further in Phase 3. So if, I think this actual sewer system is past Phase 2, if you look at it.
Right.
So, but many of those lots are, in Phase 2, see, in, in Phase 1, they're all over one acre mostly. So Phase 2, where you get 1 and 2, I think we could probably get to the point where the pipes are down far enough and will get accumulated. But we're, ultimately, what we're going to do is use the pipes that we're putting in the road to tie into another system, so...
Right. And when the, another project, Patterson Track SME, came through, and we couldn't connect through to the city's sewer system, we ended up doing septic, but they had to be able to convert that to the city's pipes at some point in the future. And I, I would agree, if you get past the first two phases here, then you could probably start looking at doing a community system, and then if it's still not working, then... And then if it's still not working, then you could come back through, you know, with an-
We have a, also, in your development agreement, you have us come back every year and review with your people, and so it gives us time to talk about it.
Right. So if we did want to change that to never require it, and who knows what's going to happen to septic by that time, you know, maybe we'll get the plasma gasification and it's not a problem anymore. You just, you just don't know what's going to happen. So I think that would give us some comfort level that we're building in that direction, but at the same time, give them the flexibility to get through their first two phases.
Having the backbone helps on everything.
Yeah, right. And by that time, the city might be out here and if they got the pipes in the ground-
And then treating the water, one level up, so we can use it.
Does that make sense?
So we were at Phase One being this LAMP, and then now we're at Phase One and Two?
Yeah, correct.
Are you guys okay with that?
Oh, yeah. Like I said-
Or grudgingly.
Uh, no, we're okay with this. If it was the, our druthers, we would have never tried to force a community system on them, given that LAMP's in place now. And again, I mean, it's night and day difference between the, like I said, the contractor dumping the old septic tank off the back of their truck to nowadays, fully engineered systems, where they have to pay someone like Craig fifteen thousand dollars a pop to engineer the system. So I mean, and, I mean, the overall plan here, I mean, it is, like Chuck said, one of a kind for the county. I mean, we did Sequoia Gateway and that was a specific plan and everything else, but it's not as complex as far as the design guidelines. I mean, this is, the county's going to be in a great position to kind of get the best design we've ever really had out of the developer. And they're agreeing to it with their COA, that we don't really have another project like that in the county. In a previous life, being developers represented and sitting on these design review boards, I mean, that's where the, I think you get your best design work out of, is those architects and engineers. And sometimes they're harder on these new applicants than the planners are. So I really like the idea, but I think, Craig, if you could add-
Yeah, let me just add, kind of like from a design and environmental perspective. So, you know, we've been kind of talking about the economic perspective of allowing LAMP for Phase One or Phase Two, and then the community portion. And so what's going on here is, we're going to be in control of the sewer system through the Commercial Owners Association. What we're asking for is to meet the LAMP, which is the environmental regulation, and then be very economical and flexible on where we put the septic systems and with the treatment piece. And it's to our advantage to cluster those, okay? So we want to cluster them, you know, per the LAMP, or even more so, because the way that septic is designed, it's based on risk, kind of like in health insurance. If you're trying to insure one person, you know, covering all their risk, you have to have a larger umbrella. The more people you add to that insurance policy, you're kind of spreading the risk and the peak, okay? And so as a wastewater designer, we want to cluster as much as we can. It's more economical as we start adding more and more people away from just one or two units. So we're asking, you know, can we use the LAMP and have, you know, for all phases and be very flexible in the design? But economically, we're going to want to cluster as much as we can. We just, it's hard to predict where, you know, that's going to go at this time. And now that we have the framework of the LAMP, we'd like to use it.
I think staff is saying Phase One and Two only, though, right?
Well, that was our suggestion. I think they're still suggesting the ultimate flexibility, but I think we, the county, would have some comfort and we definitely don't want the City of Visalia charging back in here or, and/or Regional Water Quality Control Board having any greater concerns. I think that gives us the, I mean, by the time we get out to Phase Two on this project, you know, we might be a decade down the road, and like I said, you don't know what's going to happen then. So I think both sides are in a better position if we limit it to the first two phases, being allowed to individual septic tanks. And that way, they're not forced to cluster either. But by the time we get to the Phase Three, that a community service, community sewer system would be installed by the time you get to the third phase. And like I said, if things changed, changed on the development agreement, it's not that difficult. We did an addendum to the-
We won't be here for that.
No, we won't. So we did an addendum to the-
Leave it to yourself.
Just so, just so the owner knows, we did an addendum to the Sequoia Gateway project, and I think I had it up at the board in about three weeks from the time we even thought of the idea. So it's not, it's not that difficult. And the Merck or whatever it was, Development Agreement, we took that up to the board to get rid of it completely. So I mean, the development agreement process is not, not that difficult.
Just clarification here. So you're not, are you saying that by the time they get to Phase Three, they've got to be able to tie into the city?
No, they have to have their, well, they have to have their own individual septic system on site or tie into another jurisdictions sewer.
Aren't we already setting one up in each one of those phases already with LAMP? Isn't that what you're saying?
I'm saying you're going to have individual septic tanks, the potential. He's going to try to cluster them, but he's going to have the ability to have individual septic tanks for the first twenty-two lots. And after that, when they get to Lot Twenty-three, whenever you get to the, whatever the phasing goes, however the phasing goes, when they get to that next lot and that next phase, they have to have their community septic system in place. So Phase Three, by Phase Three, they have to have the community septic system in place. That would be the-
But all along, but all along, they're treating effluent that comes out of the septic tanks. So it's not just going right into the ground in a typical leach field. It's being treated and then used for landscaping. So it's-
Correct. It's not a typical, it's not a typical system that they're providing right now.
Well, so what we, so they're ready to go to Phase Three and the city's not ready to take them on, so what happens?
Then they'd have to build, what we're suggesting right now at that point, they'd have to build a community system, and we don't, we don't know what that community system looks like at that point. It could be some kind of bigger scalping plan or something that pulls the, so I mean, there's lots of flexibility that could be built into what Craig's talking about as far as the technology available here. But I'm just saying, once we, once we take those terms, we're counting on the technology here. I'm just saying, once we take the requirement for a community septic system out of here, then there is the potential that they would do individual septic tanks in accordance with LAMP. We're just fortunate that they're offering this technology right now. So I guess the other thing we could do is in the development agreement, write into there that this technology be used, but I don't know how much we want to restrict the developer. That's, that's what the offer is on the table right now, is that they would use this technology.
And this is Craig, I just want to add one more thing. You know, the phasing is suggestive right now, and I believe that the way we've written it up is, you know, it's all an estimate of our methodology of how we think we can build this out. You know, realistically, it's kind of changed. What was Three is looking like it could come as Two. And so we just want to be flexible, so that, I mean, we know that One is our backbone, that's where our wells are at, and that's where the water system needs to be, but Two or Three may flip, you know, one may happen earlier than the other, and so that's just one more thing to-
Well, and so, given that, I mean, we'll just call it the Third Phase, so we're not strictly saying the Third Phase on the map right now, because even the subdivision map act allows you to build out any other phase without ever having to come back through with a new tentative map. So we'll just say at the Third Phase instead of Phase Three, that they would do that.
Are we given so much flexibility that the Water Board's going to step back in and say, well, wait a minute now?
Well, Craig Hartman is very involved with the Water Board, and they respect him greatly, so I wouldn't see that being a problem.
Okay.
And again, at the, if they go over the thirty-five hundred gallons, thirty-five hundred gallons per day, then that goes to Regional Water Quality Control Board anyway. So depending on the sizing of these tanks, they'll probably be in front of them, because, yeah, we only handle up to thirty-five hundred gallons per day, so anything more than that will be up there anyway.
Okay.
So what's the staff's recommendation? We've heard a lot of talk here, so I'll close the public comment for right now.
What's that?
Staff's recommendation, and we might have some more questions, but-
Final?
Not final. We're just trying to get something we can understand.
I'm sorry?
They call in?
We have no phone calls and no emails.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have the recommendation, there's going to be four recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. One is the approval and certification of the final EIR, is number one. The second one is the recommend approval of the vesting tentative map with the additional fire comments. The third recommendation would be recommend approval of the planned development and the master development guidelines in the PD twenty zero zero one. And the fourth one would recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for the development agreement update, and that would include the Phase One and Phase Two agreement that we just came to in that portion, number four. So Phase One and Two would be LAMP, Phase Three would be not individual properties, but same system, but more properties would be on one system instead of multiples. Does that make sense? And that would be the fourth recommendation with that.
So maybe my fellow commissioners, we can go through one, two, three, and so maybe we can start by, I can get a motion to approve the first, the first recommendation, we just went away, but. Bring those back up again, the recommendations disappeared.
There's one.
There's one.
One, so I think we're okay with that, so if-
That is.
That's the final, that's the first one.
Make a recommendation on one, can we get a motion for?
This is John Elliott, and I will approve this recommend approval and certification to the Board of Supervisors of the final EIR SCH two zero one seven zero one one zero two seven for the Sequoia Drive-In Business Park Project, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title Fourteen, CAL code regulations.
So do I have a second, please?
Ed Diaz will second after John moves. There we go.
Call for the vote. Not everybody's voted, so-
Commissioner Pearson, we need your vote.
Motion carried, so then maybe we can go on to the next recommendation. Second. Someone would like to make that motion, please?
Yeah, Ed Diaz will move to approve or recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the vesting tentative map, TSM eight three four.
Additional comments from the Fire Department?
Yes.
No comments from the Fire Department.
Do I have a second, please?
John Elliott will second.
Sorry about that.
Motion carried, so can we go to the third? Can I have a motion to approve?
Ms. McElroy, I recommend, I will make a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for the planned development, PPD number twenty dash zero zero one, master development guidelines.
Ed Diaz will second.
Vote. Okay, motion carried. Now we'll go to the fourth recommendation, and that's one I think want to make sure it's perfectly clear, okay? So go ahead, Chuck, and read that and-
We just recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, the development agreement update, DEV twenty zero zero two, for the Sequoia Drive-In Business Park Development, with the change to the agreement that Phase One and Two will, it'll be acceptable to have LAMP septic sewer systems on individual lots, but coming to Phase Three, they will have to become, the Phase Three and Four will essentially have to become the communal septic system. So all this lots will come into the one system.
Would like to make a motion to-
Yeah, I will move that we take Chuck's recommendation as stated.
Maria McElroy will second.
Motion carried. So I hope that you guys are happy. Okay, thank you.
Hard to see in that corner.
Only place to do business.
That's an incubator space, kind of.
Yeah. Okay, planning directors, update?
So there was a request for a little bit of a fire update, and a good opportunity to get fire updates are from Charlie Norman at the Board of Supervisors meetings on Tuesday mornings. So Chief Norman, yesterday, was definitely commended by the board for their efforts in controlling the fire. I don't know where we're at exactly today. I know we've progressed past the twelve and maybe to fourteen percent containment, but the, I would like to commend Mike Washam and Hector Ramos and his team, because they've been working in OES's facility all weekend long and trying to help manage some of the concerns of the citizens, taking phone calls. Maria Flores and Julie Harper work in our office, were there all weekend, taking phone calls and helping HHSA in doing that, so, and really stepping up and helping out. So I think we're really getting into a position to really not help out now, because that's not necessarily what we do, except for help manage the phone calls. But I think when, when we are able to go back up there and assess, Hector Ramos, Chief Building Official, will be immediately up there and helping to assess. And, you know, just trying to figure out what houses can stay and which ones need to go. Yesterday, our CAO did put Mr. Lockman of OES kind of in charge as far as what the cleanup's going to look like, getting the federal assistance to do that. So all those things are in place, and if, kind of neat if you, they have a map, you know, where you can actually see real time what the properties look like. So people's concerns can either be realized or relayed, but the, just the ability to do that's phenomenal. It might be off a little bit, and they're trying to rectify those maps right now, but again, it's kind of a first time that people can actually see that. So we'll see what happens. I understand the few cabins in the forest that got burned, but for the most part, that we've been able to stop the fires before they get to the more dense areas. It's been a phenomenal effort, because yesterday, Chief Norman was talking about how the fire just continues to jump out ahead, and it takes a Herculean effort to stop that progress of the fire. So they, it looked like we were able to contain most of the fires around most of the more urban areas, so.
Aaron, do you anticipate any issues where we've lost residents in a non-conforming situation and it can't be replaced?
I think we're, you know, going to resolve as much as we can and streamline the process for rebuilding as much as we can. So I don't see that being of great, great concern, but the, I think there'll be a lot of, more of a push to rebuild than necessarily make sure that the zoning's right on the property. um, make sure that the zoning's right on the property. But yeah, I mean, there's, uh, yeah, just hearing the stories and everything else, I mean, there's, there's definitely with the insurance requirements, uh, it's made the situation, uh, it's going to be very, very difficult to, to, uh, build back to nowadays standards.
Yeah, I, I know in the par- in the parks, um, some of these old grandfathered cabins that have been in there for years and years, uh, if they're lost, they may not be able to be replaced.
That's certainly true in the national forest part of this. The national park side, which is the Three Rivers side, is a totally different situation. And fortunately, when that fire was kind of heading our way through the, via the South Fork, it, the weather took a really nice turn and shifted it and kept it pretty much up in the higher elevation where eventually we can get to a place that's previously been burned in the national parks and we're probably going to be able to stop that fire before it gets up into Mineral King and some really precious historic resources that are up there, including a family cabin that I have that's, I'm associated with, it's ninety-six years old and on the National Register of Historic Places. There are fifty-eight other cabins up there in that same situation. And, uh, it's, I mean, it's been touch and go for our community. I think the major, um, impact to our community is it totally stifled our economy and, you know, just closed the national park at a time when we really needed to recover from the COVID business this year. So Three Rivers, and I can tell you, in my twenty-five years of, you know, being on top of the news there, we've never had a more sad or tragic time than what we're experiencing right now. And we're not having the structures burned up by the fire, but we're experiencing the worst air quality that you could ever imagine. It's just, it's shocking how bad it is. The long-range implications of this, I don't think we're going to know this for years. And it's been a tremendous toll on our community, but we're strong out there and we're going to come back from this, there's no doubt.
Um, the, uh, yeah, and this leads to kind of the other effort we are, are going through and that we have to go through moving forward, and that is to, to actually have an adaptation and resiliency plan in our general plan, not that it's going to stop fires or anything else like that, but I think in the future that would help on the recovery side, um, because, uh, it, what we have right now as far as, um, uh, safety element, uh, was, uh, re- really sufficient for two thousand and eighteen, but just hearing, um, some of the, uh, the horror stories about being sued on that adaptation and resiliency plan or not having one for projects miles away, just because you, you know, Ventura getting, uh, Oxnard getting sued because they don't have one when the fire threats aren't that big for Oxnard, but because Ventura County didn't have one either, you know, they couldn't, couldn't point to that plan. So I think there'll be more coordinated plans, uh, moving forward. Uh, I mean, that's kind of where we want to take our, our general plan to, to really look at that a little bit more closely. Um, and we're, we'll be look, reaching out to try to get some, some money to do that over the next couple, couple of weeks. Um, outside of that, uh, you know, as far as this last month, we had the, uh, highest valuation, uh, as far as our building permits, um, that we've ever had. We had as much last month as the whole last year and that's really because of the biogas pipeline industry. Uh, so we, we approved a, a big encroachment permit, uh, for the north side of the county that, that really upped our, uh, valuation as far as our building permits. So, uh, yes, th- there will, there will definitely be impacts to the economy, uh, we haven't really seen them, um, yet, except in our numbers, as far as the permits, um, that were coming through the door, but they, they picked back up again, so, so we'll see as far as what, if there is a slowdown to the, to the building. But I think, you know, if there is, uh, recovery in, in the areas that do get, do get burned down, I think, uh, again, will help as much as we can in any situation, but the, uh, the potential is also that there will be, uh, the, the build, what, what comes back later might be, uh, even more economically driven, so, again, we'll, we'll see what happens in that, that situation. But, uh, we're, we're just trying to get into a place over the next, uh, year to have that adaptation and resiliency policy in our, in our general plan. Uh, that's all really I have. Did Hector or Public Works have anything to add? So.
Um, do any of my fellow commissioners have anything to add?
Nope.
No? Meeting adjourned.
Are you staying up there or are you staying down the hill? Are you, are you in Three Rivers?